I'd like to announce the opening of the June 15, 2011 Barnstable County Commissioners Meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence while we remember those brave men and women that are fighting for us in other lands, as well as those ones who have given up their lives. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, it's Garnet. I have to leave at 11:15 because I'm going up to the State House. They're having a hearing this, well, not a hearing, but Sour Peak has arranged a meeting with the Chairman of Municipalities and with the Speaker to talk about the local option taxes for the vacation rentals and Brewster, I think, and Province Town and--
How which I think is more open than--
Yes, and Falmouth are the towns that have passed the Home Rule petitions. So I said I would come up and maybe the Speaker and try to help push this forward. As you know, we've been trying for four years to do this.
Okay, so understand--
So I will leave. So just so everybody knows, I'm not going to play golf. Because I don't know how anyway, but that's okay.
Okay, so perhaps we could go, if, could we go procedurally and vote to approve the minutes on the summary of action?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay, so we'll get that out of the way while--
Okay.
Okay, do you have any questions on the summary of action?
And I believe there were a question on the transfers for the CLC.
Yes, last week.
And I think you were sent, Kara sent you the responses to what those two transfers were for. One was to pay for a subscription to an energy policy, and the other one is escaping me.
It was actually only one--
Just look at it.
No, it was for a newsletter, the E--
The newsletter--
The E letter that they get every day that gives the rates or the cost of power.
And the other one was--
No, it was just those two.
It was just, yeah, oh, okay, all right.
No, I want to thank Maggie for that explanation. That was really helpful.
Can you move forward on that?
Yes. So I will move the summary of actions.
That's all right, I'll second that, and always a favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, they'll take care of that. And so that will free you from when you want to go. So now I would like to get back to--
You said the minutes.
See, that also includes ratifying the actions that you were taking on.
Yeah, that is on that list.
So with that, let's get back to everybody's favorite time of the meeting, public comment. Yes, Mr. Rogers?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Are you any relation to the--
Go ahead. To the famous Rogers.
You don't wear sneakers over, so--
I do, no, no relation, although Famous Mr. Rogers has spent a lot of time in Wellfleet.
Good, good. So how are you today?
Fine, it's a wonderful place in the neighborhood.
Are you gonna ask for something different today?
No, I'm afraid not, I'm pretty much asking the same thing. Once again, my two suggested agenda items did not make it to the Commissioners' agenda in spite of the fact they were submitted to you last week. This is really puzzling to me in light of what, to me, seems their importance and in light of the Commissioners' new spirit to accept public input. My two suggested agenda items were a discussion of the rationale for the Commissioners' belief that they have no oversight role over CIVIC and CLC, and secondly, a discussion of the nature of the requested public forum to be discussed at CIVIC's meeting tomorrow. I'd like to address these issues fairly briefly in a different and more convincing way. We've all read Patrick Cassidy's article last week in, last Saturday, in the Cape Cod Times entitled "Critics Target County Agencies." The firm to these critics is Chris Pawecki, a founder of Seawind and a member of the Brewster Energy Committee. Certainly, he is not opposed to the Brewster Wind Project, but he is in favor of good government in states, absolutely. I think--
...conflicts of interest. This is not just someone in the town opposed to the Brewster Project. Also, in the same article, Mr. Ron Bergstrom, head of the Assembly of Delegates, is quoted as saying, "I'm concerned about the finances of CIVIC. They spent a lot of money and have very little to show for it. This is not a member of Seaward Seashore speaking." Toward the end of the article, Senator Robert Larry states, "Transparency is the most important goal of any government, especially when it comes to the flow of money. If it's too convoluted and not clear, I think you have to clear it up." This is not a windwise Cape bipartisan being quoted. In going back a bit in the article to former county commissioner Marie LaClaire, "Soon the advisory board," I believe she's speaking of CIVIC and CLC, "is making decisions that should be made by the county commissioners. The bug should stop with the county commissioners. This is not a critic of county government taking pot shots at county government." I'd like to respectfully make two practical suggestions. No matter what you honestly believe about your role vis-à-vis CIVIC, ask, ask for CIVIC's financial records and statements, as well as the attorney's fees. How can that hurt? Given CIVIC's public notoriety, how can they refuse you? You've already asked CIVIC for a public forum, why not for their financial data? And secondly, please attend the CIVIC meeting tomorrow and do not allow yet another formal and irrelevant presentation from Maggie Downey showing lines of authority between CLC and CIVIC. Lastly, the Cape Cod Times article states, "Long-term county watchers are keeping an eye on debate." I would say it's more like the whole world is watching. Right now, you have a choice. You can hope the CIVIC/CLC tangle will blow over and you can force away any responsibility, or you can find your voice. I hope you'll choose wisely for the transparency of government in Barnstable County.
Thank you. Anybody else to public comment? Yes, your new voice?
A new voice, a different voice. Judy Thomas, but from the League of Women Voters, for "Good Morning."
Good morning.
The sun is maybe going to shine today, good day. Our League, as you know, has followed and supported the Barnstable County Government for years, and we continue to do so. On April 6, 2011, the League of the Cape Cod Area made a statement supporting the County Charter Review Commission, or Task Force. Since that date, two months ago, although we've monitored both the Commissioners' and Assembly of Delegates meetings, we have seen very little progress. We respectfully request that a status record of the progress of the Task Force be a part of the Commissioners' meeting before the end of June. One of our concerns is that the charge of the task seems to be, as far as we know, still in draft form. So we wonder, has any progress been made to finalize that charge? Who or what group is responsible for overseeing that part of the process? Another concern is the composition of the special commission. Have any decisions been made either about the quantity of the members or their qualifications? In the former statement, we suggested representation from varied segments of the community, as well as from county and town levels of government. Other relevant qualities to be considered were gender, age, ethnicity, as well as backgrounds in various relevant fields. And then another concern is the role of the Assembly of Delegates in relationship to this special commission or task force. Is any consideration being given to their inclusion in the process? Is the Assembly being informed of the progress of the special commission? And finally, the League encourages, as we did before, an open and transparent process. In our former statement, we recommended that the process should establish deadlines for its work that foster both thoroughness and meaningful and timely progress. All meetings should be open and invite public comment and provide timely minutes for the public's review. And once again, we thank you for the opportunity to express our concerns.
Thank you.
Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I'd like Mark to respond to that.
Yeah, I just heard from both Rob and Henri last week. They, as you know, we were trying to stay out of the--
Thank you.
--membership of the committee, and we were waiting for them to bring back their recommendations, which you would invite to the committee. They're working on that. They have reviewed the draft charge. As far as I know, they're comfortable with the draft charge, still is in draft form. And once they are prepared to bring to you their recommendations in terms of membership on the committee, we'll schedule Rob and Henri to come in. You guys can adopt the charge, I think, at that point in time, or take any comments on it, if you wish.
I guess the question--
That's where we are.
Do we have any sense of how long that will be?
No, but I can give them a nudge.
Please do.
That's what I was going to say, if they should give us a time certain--
Sure.
Because I think people are going to want to know that, as well as--
We'll schedule it, yeah.
And hopefully by the, well, if we can do it by the end of the month, that would be good. Because then they get into July and the summer, so, I mean, as soon as, the sooner they get up and running, I think, the better. At least get themselves established so that, over the course of the summer, they can do something.
If I may, did you mention that Henri probably couldn't start until July, July because of a pre-formal commitment he had?
He didn't mention that to me. It was, it was an email exchange, and I didn't, he didn't--
And I think that was part, I mean, in my conversation with Rob, he mentioned something to that effect, that they were putting together people. So I think that, that the beginning of July, this would start formally going forward. They'd been together, as, well, as Mark said, putting together the list of names. He'll be contacting people. And because of a commitment that Henri had, he really couldn't start diving into it with full force until July. So that's, that's all I know, informally.
I just wanted to make another statement. In a sense, the planets are aligning here. The, the work that the League has done and their suggestions about having this special commission is very good. The work that the Commissioners are doing in terms of getting an assessment of county services, we're about to receive the report on that within the next 10 days. And then all of your issues that you have raised about the compact and CIVIC and the relationships, I think these are all coming at the same time, but they are complex issues. And some of them, I think, have more of a priority for response than others. But I think we need to fold all of this into our review of where we are, and how do we get here, and where are we going to go in the future. So I know you feel a sense of urgency about getting some responses to, to your concerns, and I think we feel that same sense of urgency, but it has to be done in a, in an appropriate way. You can't just, you can't just come out and give pieces here and there. I think it's really important to, to take a look at the whole thing, and when you respond, respond in a, in a, in an all-encompassing manner, if you will, and not just respond in pieces of it, but actually give the full picture so that people understand it. So, and I'm not saying it's going to take forever. And I'm not saying you have to wait till the very end of all this to hear everything, you won't. But I think we need to really take, take these together, because they're, they all relate to one another. It's all, it's all county government.
And Rob and Henri are aware of, okay, I call it the Mark Morse Study--
Right.
--because that's who's doing it from MMA consulting.
Right.
And I can touch on that, too. That was on my list of kind of Commissioners' upcoming schedule things.
Why don't we complete public comment, and then, because in 10:05, we're going to be having a discussion on politics--
That's fine.
--that will be appropriate. So I think Mr. Ridnick is the last one here.
Thank you so much, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chairman. I am Professor Ridnick, and I am from Wellfleet. Thank you for your time this morning, and thank you, Commissioner Flynn, for your comments just a moment ago about all of these things kind of coming together. As you know, I and many citizens have been attending your meetings for many weeks. We have also been attending meetings of CLC, CIVIC, and the Assembly of Delegates in an attempt to exercise our fundamental citizen rights in a democracy. The right to attend, observe, and participate in public meetings, the right to respectfully ask questions and seek answers to basic questions provided by law, the right to request and review public documents and information, the right to be treated, Mr. Doherty, the right to be treated with dignity and respect by public employees and elected and appointed officials. I can today report that all of these rights have been illegally restricted or denied over and over again. To be honest, if I had not lived through these past months and experienced the behaviors and actions of public employees and officials, I would never have believed it could happen in our nation, in our state, nor in our county. It has been a sad, a most sad and distressing realization to me and frankly to many Barnstable County residents. Now Commissioners, I come before you with a different approach. To me and others, it is, it is a new day. Every step, every action, every encounter during these months that we have taken has been done with respect for you and all public employees and officials. We have merely been attempting to exercise our democratic rights to the best of our abilities. Yet what we have consistently received is feedback about our motives. It's been said that these troublemakers are uniformly acting with a single purpose, to oppose wind energy projects throughout the Cape. But nowhere, nowhere in our system of government does it allow or enable public employees or elected or appointed officials to modify their responses to citizens based upon the real or perceived motives of the citizens. As Commissioners, you have a sworn duty to all citizens who elected you, and thus far you have failed in your duty. What we have been consistently requesting is information, just asking questions to better understand two agencies created by Barnstable County, housed in Barnstable County offices, staffed by Barnstable County employees, and listed on the organization chart-- listed on the organization chart the following way. In a direct line of reporting to the Commissioners' office, both CIVIC and CLC on the organizational chart, in a direct line reporting to the Commissioners' office, then to the Assistant County Administration office, then to the County Administration office, and then finally, directly to the County Administrators, to the County Commissioners. You've probably seen it, but I have copies, so you can redo it.
Thank you. Are you finished?
No, one more minute. And yet, your legal counsel provides you your opinion, you have the opinion that the County Commissioners do not have any supervision or responsibility for CLC or CIVIC. How is that possible? You're the executive branch of county government. You're the leaders. And I believe now is the moment for you to act and to meet your duties and exercise your leadership. In my opinion, Barnstable County Government is in crisis. The Cape Cod Times front page article on Saturday is an example. The online position signed by more than 300 people is an example. The continuing refusal of public employees and elected and county officials to treat citizens with basic respect and dignity is an example. Thirty seconds more. The misappropriation of millions of dollars, the potential misappropriation of millions of dollars of ratepayer, taxpayer money is an example. The news in Saturday's article that Con Edison Solutions has provided more than half a million dollars to CLC, which transferred the money to CIVIC, or the money coming from Con Edison directly to CIVIC. And then in the article, it was reported that Con Edison Solutions has a contract with CIVIC, and when approached by the Cape Cod Times reporter for comment, Con Edison Solutions refused to comment. This is an example, and there are many, many other examples. And I believe the failure of you, our elected executive leaders, to even write a letter to CIVIC and to CLC and ask them a list of specific questions and to, and to request documents to support their answers is inexcusable. Clearly, the performance of these agencies will at some point come to light. But I believe it is your duty, it is your responsibility to secure the information, the documents, and the answers to the multiple, to the multitude of questions that we and many others have been asking for months. And then to provide all the information in a transparent and open manner to the public. On the Barnstable County website, it states the county government is quote, "open and proactive." And I hope, beginning this morning, that you can begin to demonstrate the fact that you are an open and proactive government. And one way you can do it is begin answering questions. You have the information. Mr. Zalinski's here, treasurer of, of CIVIC, he's treasurer of the county, he's administrator. Mr. Doherty is, is chairperson of CLC. On March 23rd, there was, you said, Mr. Doherty, a transfer of $337,000 on that date by CLC to CIVIC. And we met you, and you said that that was done in public in that meeting, and yet in the CLC minutes, there is no mention of it, in the CIVIC meetings, there's no mention of it. And to be honest with you, I sat through the entire CLC meeting that day, and there was no mention of it. It never came up. It was never discussed. And yet that transfer occurred on that date. And the question, because you're all in the room, just answered the public, how did that happen? It's required to have, I talked yesterday at length to the Attorney General Office again on the open meeting division. And in that discussion, I asked them specifically, I have the documents right here, is it required by, by public entities when it comes to the allocation and transfer of public funds? Is that supposed to be done in public or can it be done in private session or executive session? And he said, "There are 10 reasons why a public entity can go into executive session." But in those 10, it has, it's, has nothing to do with the allocation of public funds or the transfer of public funds. So his statement was, obviously, it has to be done in public session. And I sat through that whole CLC meeting, it was never done. And can you, have the people in the room, can you describe how that happened and why that's not represented?
Mr. Ridnick, I appreciate your comments. I've, you've heard them before, and public comment is now over. Thank you for your comments. We have to get, we have to move on to our agenda.
Thank you.
And our agenda starts with the continued discussion on public comments policy and open meeting law items. And the first part of that is, I believe we are in receipt of a proposed public policy from--
This is the revision based on the discussion a couple weeks ago?
And my review of it, it appears to mirror suggestions that have been made by Eupat with regard to these items.
Right.
And even I--
And I've been, oh, and I might say that, that your suggestion, I've invited the Speaker of the Assembly of Delegates to be here, to participate perhaps on this--
Do you want to--
--as well as, as well as perhaps getting into areas of how we can participate in the Assembly's meeting and not violate the meeting law.
Do you want, Pat, you want to mention these things as well as part of this discussion?
Yes. Actually, I happened to attend a conference on Saturday up in Sutton. It's the Massachusetts Selectmen's Association Leadership Conference that they have every year. And one of the breakout sessions happened to be governance, which subtitled is "The Open Meeting Law, the Public Records Law." And there were two representatives of the Attorney General's Office there, and also an attorney from Culpeperman and Page, with whom we are familiar. Her name is, right.
Goldman.
Yes. It just went right out of my mind.
It's okay.
Anyway, she was, she was the attorney for the Charter Review back when Tom Bernardo was the speaker. Goldman from Culpeperman and, Laura, Laura Goldman from Culpeperman and Page. So we've, we've all had contact with her in the past. And actually, there, the, the parts about the open meeting law, and it pertains not just to selectmen, it pertains to public bodies, including county commissioners. It does not apply to the State, State House and the state reps, because they don't have to, they don't have to comply with the open meeting law. So, and I think what we're doing, it, I felt very good about it, because I think what we have been doing here actually mirrors what I heard there. And I brought back some documents that were distributed at the meeting on the public records law, the open meeting law, the conflict of interest law, that was another piece that was discussed at this meeting. Been to a lot of these over time, and they don't really change very much, except for the changes in the open meeting law that occurred just last year. And, and we have those, I think, pretty well understood. So this policy that we have, the draft policy, mirrors exactly what, what the Attorney General's Office says regarding public comment, which is that public comment are routine matters, such as the announcement of scheduled events or recognition of an individual who has contributed to the community. I'm not sure that really needs to be in there, because I think any resident, whether they've contributed or not, they're contributing by being here, the way I look at it. So I'm not sure that I would necessarily leave that in there. But any recognition of an individual shall be limited to three minutes unless otherwise approved by the Chair. And the Chair has, in recent past, allowed more than three minutes, and that's okay, depending on the topic. Since the matter was not included on the posted agenda, the County Commissioners may not participate in discussion. And that's really what the open meeting law says, that if you bring up topics, you, we can't really participate in the discussion. But they also say that sometimes there might be a topic of real relevance that is not on the agenda, and the Commissioners may want to have some discussion. But you can't, we can't deliberate and we can't vote, that has to be postponed. They advise that we not do that. It doesn't, we're not violating the open meeting law if we do participate, but they, because they advise us to take it up, so that more people are aware of that that's going to be on the discussion. And then the, the policy part of it, "Any member of the public may submit a request to address a topic relating to matters within the jurisdiction granted by law," because it has to be, you can't talk about things that, for which we don't really have any jurisdiction over. "That invites participation and discussion by communicating either by written or electronic transmission to the County Administrator." Now that's my question. Would you want people who want to, I ask this of you, would you want anybody, any resident of Barnstable County who wants to be on the agenda to contact you directly, or would you like to designate someone in the office to handle those calls?
I prefer they contact me directly.
Contact you directly.
Yeah, and then I go usually to Bill, and as, or whoever the chairman happens to be.
I think it would be better if we were all aware of whatever anyone wanted to put on public comment. I mean, Bill and you can put the agenda together, but I think we should be aware--
Well, I think that's what the next part--
So then it says--
--because the Chair has some discretion in this matter, but then if his discretion is no, people can come and get a two-person vote, see what I mean?
But I also want to point out that in the open meeting law, it does state that the Chair is really the representative of the Board. In essence, the Board is the Chair. The Chair, the, there is a designated Chair to run the meeting, to facilitate the meeting, to put together the agenda, to be responsible for the administrative tasks of the meeting, but the Board is the Chair. So I think that we should all be aware of whatever public comment, the, the decision can be with Bill, if we, you know, disagree with that, then we can have conversation with that, but I think we should all be aware--
I understand what you're saying, but I think it's, this is an administrative function. Somebody calls, contacts, sends an email, writes a letter, they want to be on the agenda, they may say, at a specific date. They may even request a particular time. Of course, sometimes our meetings are not, our time is not, not set in stone. It isn't set in time every week. As you know, it's in the afternoon sometimes when it's an assembly day or it's in the morning, and we're working that out to resolve the time. But I think you need to also, that need, the person needs to request how much time they want. But in terms of what Sheila is saying is, once there is a proposed agenda, I think it's a good idea to keep a running calendar in the office, so that if somebody calls and wants to be on the agenda, July 23rd, or whatever date that is, it's written down there, and you can come and, come in and look at that. So you can plan ahead and see what items are coming up, so that we don't, you know, like, right now, we don't know necessarily what's coming up in July or August. But if people are asking to come in and discuss something to be on the agenda, it's good to know in advance. So if we keep a calendar, you know, a calendar that shows the Wednesdays, Wednesdays, and lists the requests that have, that are coming in, that way you can know. And then if it's something that you don't agree with, or if someone asked to be on and it was denied for some reason, then you can, you can see that from the calendar.
That's if it's all included in the calendar.
Right.
If it's been decided that it's not going to be on the calendar, then that's not our decision. That's why I think that all of the requests should be, there might be people, and it has happened, you've had a conversation with someone or some, you know, maybe I've had a conversation and say, "Call and, and get on the agenda." Maybe they have, and it really, you know, and it gets put off in the back burner, and maybe those that are putting together the agenda, and I'm not, this gets passed around, so it could be any of us. I just think there are times you might read it and say, "You know what? I think we do need to put that on the agenda. I know something about that. I told them to request that." I just think it's-- I just think it's, it's, it's more open for all of us to know. Every request, the Chair and the Administrator can make the list and if we have a request of anybody, of any of those other requests that were felt not as important, if we felt that they were important, we could say it.
Yeah. I can't imagine that people who have a legitimate reason and a legitimate request to be placed on the agenda would, would not be allowed to be on the agenda. I think it would be so unusual that, that a person or an organization not be allowed to come in. I mean, that's-
And actually, I feel, in rereading this, because I remember all of it here.
And, you know, actually, this relates to public comment.
It doesn't say that, it just says, he shall designate a time. It doesn't say that he can deny.
Right, right.
Unless it's irrelevant.
Well, let me, let me say this, that when we've had discussions about this recently, I've suggested that I would defer to request, if I took a position that I didn't think was appropriate, I also think it's important for me to communicate to you that I, I refused to put it on the agenda and then leave it up to you.
No, no, not that you refuse, that you, you received a request, you don't believe it should be on the agenda and you're going to consult with us to see what we think about.
Okay. Changing, changing the language of that would probably be useful. So right now, for example, I, I have not put things on the agenda that have been requested by, you know, by the public. And this would be an opportunity for you, if you feel that it should be on the agenda, then you should, you know, you should make your, make those known and we can talk about scheduling.
And it could be that one of us may have suggested to somebody, gee, we think you ought to come in and discuss this with us. I mean, you may not know that, but if we were to do that, I would think it would be appropriate to notify you and Mark that we have suggested perhaps that a particular group or individual come in and discuss this, that it warrants a discussion by the-
Well, it's usually what happens.
Yes.
Yeah, that's usually what happens.
But until now, Bill has made that decision and I think what he just said was the right one, that if there is a item that he feels is not of importance to put on the agenda or he feels is not worth our time, he, he communicates that with us so that we can weigh in and either concur with that decision or, or argue against it.
Now, the, the reason for that is that, as Bob Troy has told us, we had not adopted as a body, a public policy with regard to this. And unless and until we adopted such a policy, I was making those arbitrary decisions based upon the discretion that was granted me and the responsibility that comes with the Chair. Now, this is a, an evolving process and I believe we're now at another step.
Well, I think that this policy addresses two things. It addresses public comment on, on this, where it says, brief public comment on routine matters.
Yeah, your open-
And then it addresses public comment on topics, but I don't think that's really public comment. I would call it agenda items.
It's agenda items.
It's really agenda items.
And public discussion.
And it, and the time should be what the individual says they need. If they say they need an hour, well, I mean, that's a long time. So that'd have to be really considered. But if it's 15 minutes, 20 minutes, or if it's a topic that, that takes a little more time, then that time should be, it should be designated on the agenda. 10:30 to 11:10 for whomever who wants to discuss this topic and here's all the background material. So you, you know enough ahead of time that we can have background material, if it's appropriate, so that we can read it and come to the discussion prepared. So this needs to have a little bit of more clarification on that because it isn't public comment and-
It's public discourse, it's public discussion.
And it isn't necessarily limited either. It's already, I'm sorry about that.
So you said, public comment can be limited at the discretion of the Chair, so the Chair shall determine the amount of time necessary?
Well, no, the person requests what time they think they need.
Well, they can request two hours, but if you think it's 15 minutes.
We have to be able to have some-
Well, I think you negotiate the time. The person, you say, well, how much time do you think you need? And if they say, well, I need a half an hour and it seems appropriate, then it's a half an hour. But I think the person who's asking should suggest the amount of time that they think they will need or would like to have. And maybe it's, maybe it's, it's okay and maybe it isn't. I mean, I think you, you contact the individual and work it out.
I, I think in practicality, that's how it will, of course, happen.
Yeah.
But ultimately, someone needs to say, this is how much time.
Yeah.
In my opinion, that should be whoever the Chair is. Ultimately, the Chair gets to say, allocate 15 minutes.
That's true, because usually the Chair knows how much time it's going to take.
Or-
Or maybe the Chair-
Somebody's got to be the ultimate arbiter.
That's right. And that's with the role of the Chair.
And indeed, and as I read the open meeting law, that responsibility resides with the Chair.
So it, maybe it's, the Chair shall determine in consultation with the demander-
Yes. That's good.
The amount of time the demander is not quite the right English, but we'll figure it out. The amount of time necessary for the discussion.
Or the individual or agency requesting.
Yeah.
Is there anything more that we need to add to this?
No, but I-
I, I think it's important that who's requesting, if they have document, materials or documentation, if they provide those, they have to-
Yeah, so maybe that should be included in there as well.
Yeah.
It's not going to be mandatory for the discussion.
No, you can't make it mandatory, but I think if there are-
It would be useful.
It would be useful, but it's not mandatory.
No, but if somebody's coming with a, to have a discussion and they have materials and they plan to bring the materials to the meeting, then it would be helpful for us to have a copy of the materials. But they don't have to create materials just because they're having a meeting. If there aren't any materials, they don't have to bring them.
There's the other element that if indeed we're having a discussion with a group that has, let's say, some interest in getting more detail with regard to an activity, that we need to engage and involve the members of the, of the agency that they want to get more information from. And I believe that we need to get a response from that agency so that we're not acting in what I call a speculative way, but are acting based upon the information that we know and that we have available. I would not want to get into, let's say, into a situation where we are, let's see, discussing an application of future policy that is based upon a discussion with a, with someone that's coming in. But I would say that everybody has a right to be heard and that, that we may or may not be able to, or want to respond in what I would call an expression of opinion, if indeed the opinion only represents what is in front of us at the time, that this information can be-
Well, to give-
May I also make a suggestion? You know, we discussed maybe changing our meetings to the evening, which to me, more and more seems like a good thing to do. In, in attending select boards of selectmen from one end of the Cape to the other, there is never a meeting held of a board of selectmen without their Administrator or their, or their Counsel. And I do think that it is worth our while to have our Counsel available at meetings. I think that-
In person or by phone?
In person. Because we need guidance on many of these issues and, and they can help us on the spot as to what's appropriate, what is not, if there are conversations, if there are questions. I think that our Counsel needs to be privy to those and I think it would be prudent for us, especially as we're going forward, we're looking at changes going ahead. We're, we're going to be addressing many, many things in relation to public comments that have been made here and our own internal reviews and the special commission. I think at this juncture, we should consider having our county Council attend each meeting.
I think there's specific instances, especially the ones you mentioned, where they, but you don't have Counsel at every meeting and your boards of selectmen. You don't have Counsel at every meeting, no, prohibitively.
You don't have Counsel.
Well, that depends on how you look at it, but technically, we do.
Must have some.
We have, we have a name on the, we have a name on the lead head. No, you're not talking about, I'm talking about Chad.
Chad, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, Chad.
And Harwich is the same thing. You don't always have, you know, the Attorney present, but the Attorney is present to answer questions when the legislative group meets because the, you know, I think the Attorney's at town meeting, I think that's, that's-
Oh, yeah.
Well, often times, a board will have an issue and they, they may refer it to Counsel before a vote and say, before we can do any more of this item, we need to refer it back to Counsel and bring it back.
Unfortunately, under the current charter, for me, under the current charter, it stipulates that the Speaker is, is basically the final authority in all matters of procedure. So it's really, you know, I'm the one who would have to say, I don't, you know, I requested an opinion or something on this, but it's, it's very difficult because, if I can break in here, the question comes up under public comment that every, when people come up to public comment, 90% of the time, they're commenting on something that's already been on the agenda or they intend to see on the agenda in the future. So it's something substantive that you guys are going to discuss or that we're going to discuss. So then, and we, we create this firewall by saying, fine, if you come up under public comment, you can say whatever you want, but we're not going to deliberate, we're just going to hear you out. But the, the issue then comes, for instance, let's say, when you have someone who we know is going to come up under public comment and say something and you get a response from an opponent and they say, well, Joe Schmo is going to be there and he's going to say this and I want to be there. If I knew he was going to be there to, under public comment, I would've been, I would've been there too, you know? If I knew he was going to say this. So it's really a fine line as to what's substantive or not. My, my opinion, this, the Attorney General notwithstanding, is you can say anything you want under public comment and if, as long as the body, in other words, you or the Assembly doesn't deliberate on it, we don't necessarily have to invite everybody in the world in to, to counteract that. When, when I was asked a couple of weeks ago for a group to come in and they wanted to make comments, I said, thank you very much. And then under, when the Assembly convened, I asked the members of the Assembly whether they wanted to look into it. It was a substantive issue, it was going to take a lot of time, it was, the question was on our jurisdiction and the, the members said, yes, we don't mind doing it. And then it was time on the agenda, but then you can bring up the, the question as well, should some, should, should notification been given so that somebody who doesn't want us to look into it could have been there and said, no, you know? I mean, I'm, I'm taking it that people can say anything they want under public comment, as long as the body that they're addressing doesn't deliberate on it, that's fine. That's, that's, that's the only thing I can think of, you know? And, and-
I think that's what you would have agreed with after your session with the, with the open meeting law folks from Copeland and Page, Laura and stuff. And I think that's basically what Bob's policy says, that anybody can say, well, talk about anything they want. They can come and talk about the London phone book if they want, for three minutes apparently.
Well, and that, that goes to the agenda items, which is that a decision has to be made whether it's relevant or not. I mean, if somebody wants to talk about, let's say, the Assembly can, my, my attitude is, is what is the decision, what is our role in the decision-making process? Now, we're just going to come out of this, we're not going to waste the public's time. You know, if somebody wants to come in and talk about the federal deficit, I mean, we don't have anything to say about that. If, if, if we want the, the, a county body like the dredge or the, some other group to come in that we have budgetary authority over, then that's appropriate. So you have to decide whether or not the, the discussion being put forward is going to go anywhere. You don't want a long time discussion, it's not going to go anywhere.
Right.
Well, well, the first statement in his comments, like that, that any man, any member of the public may appear in a public meeting and request to address a topic pertaining to matters within the jurisdiction granted by law to Barnstable County and the General Court. So you're right. I mean, to come up and talk about the, the deficit is really not within our jurisdiction. But I think people pretty much, I pretty much know that they're not going to waste their time coming here and talking about something over which we don't have any jurisdiction, I wouldn't think. Unless it's something that maybe relates to the state or maybe a piece of legislation that doesn't directly affect us now, but maybe might affect us if the legislation were passed, you know, something like that.
This might be the time to-
Or to ask our support to-
Right. It might be the time to bring up, you know, one of the concerns that I think that, you know, the Commissioners have talked about as far as open meeting law issues, and that is our reporting, you know, the time when we come for a report. I'm of the opinion, based upon what Bob Troy has suggested, is that all three of us sitting there and all three of us become part of your meeting, it's a concern of mine that if you engage in the give and take that, you know, that has been my fond, say, pleasure over the last several years, that if one of us were there, we could do that. But if three of us were there, we couldn't, because then we're violating your-
You know, I would say, it doesn't matter how many of you are there, because that starts crossing that line. If you start asking them questions about the dredge, that becomes a problem unless the dredge is on your agenda.
Well, here's, well, I know, I know that I've gotten the thing-
And I know where you guys are going, but here's where I'm going, okay? The, the agenda item is communications from the county commissioners, right? You get up there and say, today we did this, you know, and then we did that. And we took a vote on this and we did that. That's fine. It was, that's what it's intended to do. Now, I agree with the, the Chair that has morphed into more than that. And I have, at times, last year when I served my first term as Speaker, I have at times tried to cut the discussion short when I thought it was getting into a debate. You know, they, somebody would say, they'd say, what did you do today? And you say, well, Bill would say, I took a vote on this. And the Assembly delegate will say, well, I think that's a terrible thing, I think you should have done this, you know? That's not what it was there for. Basically, it's either communication. And, and I can see a delegate asking a question, saying, well, what happened with the, the N-Star right away? Did you do anything on that? You might respond on that. But I agree that any substantive discussion or give and take is, is not allowed. But as far as you're, all three of you appearing at the same time, I mean, I, I don't know what Troy says, but I don't see that that's an issue unless you're, you're there to deliberate over issues and you're not there to deliberate over issues, simply to tell us what you're doing.
Well, one of, one of the technical things has been that we would go, when we finish our meeting here, we would say instead-
You go to the bar and then you discuss, you know? Now, that I can control.
You're usually there with us, of course.
I'll have a little brand add meat, you know, for the water back. But the, the issue is that we go into recess to go to join your meeting. So I think technically, we need to conclude our meeting and then just go and report it to your meeting. So that's one of the things that, you know, that we're working out here. But we want to make, I guess we need to have this conversation so that you're aware of our concern that we, although we might personally enjoy the give and take, you know, with the delegates, because after all, I am an alumnus.
I would say that the fault, if there's too much give and take, the fault lies on both sides.
Yes, indeed it does.
It's not just the-
I absolutely agree.
So I absolutely agree that we have to limit the, the communications to the county Commissioners to simply reporting on what the ongoing business of the county has been and not get into any substantive debates as to, you know, where we're going or issues and so on that, but as far as the three of you being in the room at the same time, I mean, I personally don't see that as an issue.
I'm talking about at the table.
Well, maybe that's a discussion that, like Sheila said, needs to take place at the Assembly with Bob Troy there, because I think, to me, it's not clear. I would argue, Bill, that it doesn't matter whether you recess or adjourn or whatever, as soon as you go over there and they ask you a question about the dredge that's not on the agenda, in my mind, you're deliberating and you're not deliberating on something that's on the agenda.
In many, in many ways, it's our responsibility to say, you know, that is a very good question and when you put that on your agenda, we'll be coming, we'll come over and address it.
Exactly.
That responsibility is as much ours as it is theirs. And there's been many times that we have engaged, we have felt, we have felt compelled to answer these questions. Sometimes there has been discussion about people who are not there to defend themselves and that has gone on way too long. There's, and those are all character issues. When, when people are being discussed, when they're not there to, that's total, I think, violations. And so I think that some of that onus is up to us to be able to say, that's a very good question, I can't really comment on that until I see it on the agenda and I'd be happy to come over and spend as much time on it. But if we're just communicating, we have to leave it to communicating and, you know, when we say, do you have any questions for the, I think that might be the part where it's not open.
And that's always a copy for Bill and a copy for Sheila. So let me just make sure I understand, because it's not quite clear to me. So are you suggesting that when the Commissioners come over, it's like public comment, like we talked about here, they'll tell you what they did, they'll tell you about the London phone book if they want.
Right.
But you guys don't ask, you don't participate, you're just saying, thank you very much.
No, I think we can, I think we can, we can ask, in other words, to ask, to, to ask somebody, what did you do today, is not a deliberation.
Right.
In other words, they'll say, did you take, did you, did you finalize the draft on the, on the special commission? And they'll say, yes or no. I mean, that's, that's not a deliberation. What's that?
Then you'll say, can we have a copy?
They say, no, we're dragging our fee on that as long as we keep that.
But actually, at this point, we dragged as long as we couldn't have got it.
I understand that. But, so, when I, you know, I agree, if they, if somebody said, well, you know, you guys decided to do this, and we don't think it's a good idea, that's, we can't deliberate on those issues. But as far as information, or what happened, what's the status of a certain thing, you know, what, for instance, we ask about the registry of deeds, we might say, how much, you know, how's the registry of deeds doing this compared to last month? I don't think that that's a violation of the open meeting law. It either, it's a matter of fact, either good or bad or indifferent or whatever. So I, I think it's my responsibility as, as the Speaker, which I certainly intend to aggressively use, to make sure that the conversation doesn't stray into issues that should be a matter of public disclosure or, or on the agenda or so on and so forth, and it'll make our meetings a lot quicker.
And the answer is, Dave Murphy says it's slow, right?
It's what?
Slow.
Well, I wasn't asking, but, because that wasn't on the agenda.
That's right, we can't talk about it.
I can't talk about it, but, no, I, I...
But that's just information. You're not having a substantive discussion.
Well, that's what it's supposed, that's what it was originally supposed to be, and we've all, I think, in the past, and this goes throughout the cake, you know, been in more, in an informal manner, run the meetings in an informal manner, and the memorandum to the, from now, I guess, from the Attorney General is, we can't do that anymore. Now we have to be strict.
But a lot of it is discretion.
Some of it's common sense.
I mean, really, yeah, it's common sense and discretion. If it's something that requires a simple answer, I mean, it is, if it's something that requires deliberation, then people have to express points of view, obviously, yes, you would do that. But if it's a simple response...
There has been members, members of the Assembly who have, on occasion, wanted to debate, you know, take exception to what the Commissioner's done, or debate with you, and, you know, and I agree, that's totally out of, out of order, and hopefully, if it's something you have to deal with in the future, we'll come here and debate.
But at the same time, with regard to requests for information, with regard to records, you know, matters of fact, I, I see that that's our responsibility to respond. If we don't have the answer at hand, we should, we have the responsibility to acknowledge the question and do our best to respond as soon as we can, so that the flow of information with regard to matters of fact and deed are shared by, of the executive and legislative body. And, oh, and one other thing that, going forward, the, this has to, I don't know if this is on topic, this has to do with the draft of the, of the Russian back and...
Oh, the, the, the charge, that we're calling it, yes.
I don't know where the process is as far as what involved, do we, have we, do we have a structure by which we have these hearings with regard to, because I believe there's a piece in this that requires a public input as opposed to public comment.
We haven't gotten that far. That's something you'll have to talk to Henri and Rob.
Nevertheless, I think that that's an important piece in it, that these are not to be considered meetings.
But you are on topic, and you can't talk about that, so I don't...
Okay. Now...
It's going to be on our agenda, so you're going to talk about it.
The other reason I, that I had invited you over was, if you had any questions of us with regard to our relationship.
Uh, well, the Charter, the current Charter allows that the Assembly is in charge of all, all Charter review, so I mean, there was a statement by, probably a misstatement by a member of the public, League of Women Voters, who suggested you have a Charter Review Committee. It is a Charter Review Committee, but we can't say that, because if you say that, you're violating the existing Charter, so we have to call it a special commission. Everybody, everybody should know that?
We got that.
Special commission? But don't call it a Charter Review. Yes, okay. So I have spoken to, I don't know, I'm getting off-topic, but the relationship is, I wish there was a little more open communication on certain subjects. I talked to Senator O'Leary just over the weekend, and so I understand where he is, as you have stated. Outside of that, you know, we, we'd like to be kept abreast of what's going on in the, in the county government, especially the financial position of the county on an ongoing basis, not every week, but just as information comes available. You know, we can't always make it to the Commissioners' meetings, you should hold it this ungodly hour before, so maybe if you hold it in the evening...
Four o'clock on Wednesdays.
Four o'clock on Wednesdays. But no, I think, I think, I think it was the, was the, was the feeling of the Assembly when I broached the subject to them at the end of the last Charter Review Commission, was the feeling of the Assembly that the relationships between the various bodies of county government worked well, so that there weren't any overt problems, okay? I mean, that was, not everybody felt that way, but the majority of people felt that way. And I think, I think we have new members on the Assembly who are now kind of stretching their legs, and they may have different attitudes toward these things, so what are you going to do?
If I may, I mean, what, what was requested was a, was a request from the public to be able to form a, a look at...
A special commission.
A special commission, but it's not really so much even the Charter, it's the structure of county government. And these are people who see that the gov, that we have a regional government here that can actually do something very meaningful for the future. And is the structure set up, we're 20 years old, every organization should have a look at itself, and, and how is it structured and restructured? And sometimes that best comes from the outside as opposed to the inside, because you're so close to it, you know, it's nice to have status quo. So that's why I applauded that. And when those requests were coming forward, I know I took a lot of heat for a particular email in addressing my comments to, I thought, just you alone, but, but that, that got ire up as to what is the purpose of this. But I really just think that it's, how are we structured to be effective and professional going forward to address the needs?
Well, I, I agree, and I'm going to certainly support the process, but the problems, the only issue that I have now is, first of all, I think the charge should have been, I mean, to be honest with you, you should have charged the committee before they'd gotten to this point, okay? You don't ask people to be on a committee, and then they say, well, what am I going to do? And they say, well, we haven't decided that yet. You know, you guys have not decided what we're going to do.
Well, I think we have a pretty decent outlook.
If you haven't voted on it, you haven't decided, okay? You haven't voted to codify what they're going to do. You could have talked about it all day, but unless you said, here's the charge and you voted on it, it doesn't mean anything. Now, the other thing is, is that I agree with Commissioner Lyons that one of the things, one of the defects in the previous Charter Review is the fact that it has to go through the same people who are being reviewed. In other words, it has to go through the Assembly. However, this draft charge, which I have in my possession, suggests that the Commissioners are going to make these appointments, and that the committee is going to report back to the Commissioners. So where's your independent committee?
If I may comment on that, I, I think that that's, we, I think it's very important, this is an independent special committee, and I don't think that we are there to drive that train. We are not there to make the rules. I think that the request that came to us from BRT members and members of the public, the League of Women Voters, have requested a look at this to take, to take a look at county structure. They applauded the Charter and, and encouraged it to go further. I think that in response to that, we acknowledged that it would be a good thing. And I think that we see that restructuring or, maybe there's a better way that we can do things going forward that are more effective, more professional, more efficient. If we can have input on that, I think that is a good thing. So I agree, I think that once it is, once it is there, and we have given it our blessing, it is really theirs, and I advocated for that when it was first being made. They are the ones that are going to set the agenda, they are the ones that are going to be picking, they are going to, they're going to pick these members, they are going forward and, and asking people for their participation. So once they have all of that, I think that they're going to inform us of that, but I really don't think it's for us to pick and choose who is going to be on that committee. I mean, that's my opinion. We can deliberate on that. And, and I think for it to be effective, they have to have autonomy, and they, and I think that if they, if they follow the suggestions of the League of Women Voters that they set forward several weeks ago about public input, making these meetings available so that people in different areas, so that members of the public can participate, watch, learn, listen, that is all, those were all, I thought, excellent guidelines for that committee, and I didn't think that we needed to add anything more to it.
Well, yeah, but my only, my only, to those of you who are not familiar with what we're talking about, you can simply go on the county website and look under Assembly of Delegates, so you can read the current Charter. And you can go on to the site that explains the process for amending the Charter. And so now we've gone through a separate process, which opens up the question is, why would we change the structure of county government if you're not going to pay attention to the current way it's supposed to? In other words, no one's going to pay attention to the current structure and how things are supposed to be done, what's the point in creating another structure? That you guys will not pay attention to that either.
If I may, but maybe some of that is that people feel that it's not very effective in its current structure, so that they don't pay attention...
Well, I think you guys are talking, I have to say, about two different things.
Philosophical.
We've got an apple and we've got an orange over here.
We're talking about the process of amending the Charter and reviewing the structure of county government, which is under the purview of the Assembly.
And anything that Arabin and Henri bring back to the County Commissioners that change whatever is codified in the Charter that requires a certain process, they can't do anything about that, they have to follow it. But there may be things that they bring back in terms of structural organization that don't require things to be done through the Charter Review process and through the legislative process. There may be organizational things that can be done through the administrative code, but that doesn't say it doesn't involve the Assembly, you still have to go back to the Assembly to do an administrative code thing.
As Pat said, we're doing an internal review. I think this is going to be very helpful, this will be a guide for them, because they will see the structure as it exists now. And this will be a very good template for them to work off of, and if they are looking at that along with other things, they can suggest maybe better ways of even departments functioning, maybe some departments should be collapsed, maybe some should be separated, who knows what will come out of this. But I think that all of those are going to be beneficial to our, to us as a board or any board that follows us.
Well, I, I was going to say that I see this as something very positive for the Assembly, because a Charter Review, well, for a Charter Review Committee, because they need to get public input on, on the Charter. And in a sense, this committee is going to do part of that job for them, because they're going to look at everything, and people are going to attend it because it's, it's independent, it's not, it's not related to the Assembly or to the County Commissioners, and it's kind of laying some real groundwork for the Charter Review Committee, so it would make their job a lot easier, because they'll have recommendations that they can actually, that have been vetted, if you will, through the public, and by people who, who have, who really are there because they want to be there and because they know something about it, and they have something to contribute.
I agree with you, and I want this to be a good process, but when originally it was proposed, low those many months ago, it was suggested it was going to be an overall look at county government. Well, since then, you guys have hired someone to basically look at the internal structure of county government, the departments and how it works. So you've taken, in other words, you can say it's not a Charter Review Committee, it's an overall look, but then all of a sudden, you've, you've taken, you've taken a lot of that, and you've already put it in, under the purview of some, of a, of a hired contractor. So the question is, if they're going to do that, if they're going to do a great deal of that work, what is this other committee doing? And they're limited to doing really a structural review of how we're organized.
I think if you look at what, what we have, as the consultants do, that study is more in the weeds. That's really the day-to-day tasks that, that departments perform. The, the special commission is going to look at the big picture and, and what is it? They call it the blue-sky approach, taking, looking at everything from, they're not going to be looking at the weeds. The consultant is looking at the weeds, because that's what we need to grasp, how does county government function at, at the departmental level? They're not going to look at that, I don't think.
Well, I've, I've invited Senator O'Leary, former Senator O'Leary, and he said he would be in touch with Henri Russianbeck, and understand that he does, Senator, former Senator Russianbeck does have some other issues that he's dealing with right now, but obviously, they're not going to be here today, but as early as the sixth, if, if it's possible. If not, then, then later on. And of course, I've talked to the, I've talked to the Chair of the Commissioners, Bill, and he suggested he, he would be there too. I mean, maybe we could have this, kind of an agenda item, so he can tell us, the public and everybody else where we're going with this, and maybe give it a kickoff, whatever you want.
Okay, well, I think that, you know, time has moved on, and I think that, you know, we have had, you know, we talked about this, but we now have to decide as to whether or not we will adopt the policy as we've talked about here.
Do you want me to read the amendments that we were talking about to the policy? That I have?
Okay.
Is that all right? That way we can maybe adopt that, if you guys are comfortable with it?
Yeah, because I think this needs to be, another, we have to have another draft.
Well, yeah, I think you can adopt it, we can come back with another draft. This is what I was suggesting. So everything on page one is as it is, everything on page two, down to the third paragraph under public comment topics that invite participation by County Commissioners. So that would say, the Chair shall determine, in consultation with the individual or group requesting time, the amount of time necessary for a discussion. Public comment shall be limited at the discretion of the Chair. They mean, they can, he can limit it during the meeting.
I don't think this is public comment.
Okay, so you want me to cross that line out?
This is an agenda item. This doesn't even have anything to do with public comment. It is people...
So at that time, it's just a discussion?
It's a public discussion, a public discourse.
Maybe that's what he means.
To request...
So that takes care of that, then? It says, then it will, that will strike that first sentence, and in its place, it will say, the Chair shall determine, in consultation with the individual or group requesting the agenda item, the amount of time necessary for a discussion.
Right.
And I, and I would, I'm with Pat on this, I would change public comment on topics that invite participation to public discussion.
Or an agenda topic, or something like that.
No, I would suggest that perhaps that would appear under new business.
No, it's not...
No, 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 this is ahead of time already, Bill. This is, this is an agenda item, just like the...
A request to be placed on the agenda is what it is. That's what it is.
So, okay, is, are you...
So it's not, anytime, any place that says public comment, we are going to say...
No, because this is, this is a discussion with the, whoever's request, anybody who's at the meeting, I mean, obviously, the people who requested the meeting would probably make a presentation or begin the discussion.
So it's like...
But it's, it's a discussion between anybody here...
It's a discussion topic.
Yes, discussion topic.
Instead of public comment, we'll call it a discussion topic.
Discussion topic.
Okay? And then, okay, so then that third paragraph will say, as I said, the Chair shall determine, in consultation with the individual or group requesting the agenda item, the amount of time necessary for discussion. The individual or group requesting time are encouraged to provide materials or documents to the Commissioners in advance so as to foster the discussion. And then it doesn't need to say, since the matter has been included on the post agenda, the County Commissioners may participate in discussions.
No, that's not necessary.
Okay, so are we in shape to adopt it?
Can you send that to us, like a draft, so we can review it again before, before the next meeting, so we don't have...
I would just say, why don't you adopt it as amended, and then you can amend it next time.
Otherwise, we're sort of going here and there.
That way we don't have, we're going to keep going.
So with that, we ready for a vote?
Larry, is it possible to comment? Is this part of an agenda item that we can comment on?
Yeah, we can comment.
I'd like to say one thing.
We have two minutes.
What do you want to say?
Go ahead.
I hear what you said, sir.
You have two minutes.
This is a public comment, though.
No, this is, no. What exactly, what exactly are you inviting?
We make a motion that is...
This is an agenda item, and if people in the audience want to comment...
Okay, well, hey, hold on, just, maybe under discussion, we need a motion to adopt as amended.
That's right, because we can't have a discussion unless there's a motion on the floor.
That's what we should have, shouldn't we?
Look, you know, the rules are that...
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, okay, so will somebody make a motion to adopt?
I will move this as amended.
Okay, is there a second?
And then we'll have discussion.
Now that we have a motion, a second is now open for discussion. Mr. Redmond.
Thank you, sir. This is very brief. I have in front of me the, the Office of Attorney General, March 23rd, version 3, 2411, I have in front of me the Office of Attorney General, March 23rd, version 3, 2411, which I think is the most current of the open meeting law. On page 11, I'd like to read it because I've been going to CIVIC meetings, CLC meetings and other meetings, and the public sits here as almost pawns or dummies because discussions are going back and forth.
Mr. Redmond, extend the subject.
I am on the subject, sir. There's no opportunity to understand what's being discussed because none of the documentations made available to the public. I've sat through CLC meetings and CIVIC meetings over and over again. Here's what it says in the open meeting law, page 11. In addition, the minutes must include a list of the documents and the other exhibits used in the meeting. The minutes, documents and exhibits are public records and part of the official record of the meeting. And I would just recommend that part of this, what you're adopting, is if you're having a discussion on an agenda item and there's documentation, make it available to the public so they can at least understand what the course of the conversation is rather than trying to piece together comments that we have no, it's no context.
And if I may, I believe in that guideline. It does say that if there is going to be an agenda item, any documents relating to it, such as our memo here from Attorney Troy, should be on a table for the public to pick up as they come in with those documents so that they can read them along with the discussion as it is happening. That is part of the open meeting law and I would suggest that that is included in our draft.
If they're drafts, they should say drafts.
Exactly, that's absolutely true.
Like this doesn't say draft.
I mean, I do believe.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, and I think even a draft is a public document. But it should say draft on it. Yes, it has to be printed.
No, it's not a public document. Anything that's a draft is not, under the public records law, is not considered a public document. Once the document has been adopted by the, whatever board adopts it, then they become public. But that doesn't mean that if we're discussing a document.
It can just say draft.
That it can't be available as long as you know that it's not a public document.
There are many documents to receive.
I don't mean to contradict you, but once a document has been introduced into a public meeting, it becomes part of a public record whether it is a draft or not.
For that meeting's minutes.
For that meeting, yes.
And it should be made, under the guidelines, it says that those should be made available, anything that's going to be discussed, whether it's a draft or not, should be made available.
But see, that's why if the documents are made available at the time the agenda is set, then they're available in the office so that, you know, or they could be made available prior to the meeting.
The distinction is very clear. It says that the documents must be held in the office, but they do not necessarily, they do not have to be attached to the minutes. There's no requirement.
No, it's a list of documents that goes with the minutes, right.
But that's after the meeting.
That's after the meeting, that's the minutes.
He's referring to the minutes, that's correct.
Documents that we're going to have in preparation for the meeting, we should have copies made so that people can.
And have them on a table so people can have access to them. It's stated in the agenda, the guidelines.
Excuse me, as an example, when I, I'm sorry that Mr. Burson left, but I attended the Assembly meeting just a few weeks ago when they discussed the budget for the county. And sure enough, here's the budget that they were discussing. So you sat in the office and you could at least understand what's being discussed rather than, and I can also tell you with Mr. Zelinski here, in every meeting I've been at CLC and CIVIC, every document has never been first handed to the public. And afterwards, when you make requests for those documents, inspired the open meeting law, none of those documents have ever been made available. Thank you.
Yes.
Just a quick question.
Sheila Bowen from Howard.
I'm sorry, Sheila Bowen from Howard, yes. Just a quick question on the policy that you're about to put into effect. If I could just reiterate my request of last week, and hopefully this won't happen, but if a group or an individual asks to be put on the agenda and if the chairman consults with the other commissioners and as a group you decide that the agenda items requested are not something that should be under your purview or that you have the time to discuss, I implore you to please notify the individual or the organization who requests the agenda item so that we're not holding our breath, checking the agendas to see when and if we will ever be available. I think that that would just simplify matters for everyone involved. And my other quick question is whether or not once this policy is codified, if it will be available on the website or available to the public.
Well, to respond to the last part of it, as soon as it's practicable, it will be, it will be as all the other minutes are, would be posted on the website. With regard to a notification on the request, because this was a policy in process of being adopted, I'll take, again, I'll take the onus for not calling you up and telling you that we weren't going to put it on there, or Mr. Rogers.
Okay, so in the past, that will not be the case. Will it have a yea or no?
In the future, I will make every effort to ensure that you are notified or the person that has made the request is made aware of what our decisions are as we got to placement.
Thank you very much, Mr. Redmond.
Finally, Mr. Rogers.
Yeah, I would request that one commissioner could put something on the agenda. That is, if the chairman should think this is not an appropriate issue, it needs to go to two to one, that one other commissioner could put that item on the agenda. Have I got that right?
Well, to respond to that, the policy that we're adopting does not address that. In order to address that, we would have to examine the policy to decide whether or not that was appropriate. However, the intention, based upon the conversation you've heard here, is that the other commissioners would be able to respond or to request that something be put on, but the, I don't think that anything changes the discretion of the Chair other than if the body adopting this policy decides that, if I, for example, I don't agree it should be on there, as the Chair, the other two could indeed say, we want it on there and decide that that's what would happen.
Could one person include that, is my question.
Can I respond to that? The reason that the Chair sets the agenda is because the Chair manages the meeting and one person should really be doing that. You can't have three people managing an agenda. But I believe any commissioner who wants to have something on the agenda can say, I would like to have this on the agenda next week, and it gets on. I mean, because we're commissioners, I mean, we're all equal when it comes to that. This is just an administrative function about the agenda. It has nothing to do with anyone's equal power as an elected individual.
Right, in this policy, the only discretion the Chair has is in determining whether a request relates to matters within the jurisdiction granted by law out of Barnstable County. That's the only discretion you have.
That's right. So the discretion is not, no, I'm not going to say that that group can meet. That's not appropriate at all if somebody wants to meet. If it comes under, comes under the jurisdiction of the county, then it's appropriate.
It's now Court of House 11, we need a vote.
Oh, we have to have the vote, a draft. We have a motion and a second.
Okay, is all those in favor?
Aye. Aye, as long as we are also putting in there that documents will be available, that are going to be discussed at the meeting and the minutes and documents of the minutes are provided from the former.
I think we understand that.
Okay, well, I just think it's good to be there just to remind us.
What's public and what's not public, some documents are not public, some are.
Anything that's put on the table.
Is public.
In the minutes, they are, but if it's a draft, it's not.
No, drafts are.
Or if it's a privileged communication.
It will stay draft.
We've had a vote with regard to the adoption of this policy.
Well, is that free to nothing?
Free to nothing. Okay, good luck for us.
Yes.
Okay, we've already had the vote on the minutes.
Heading to the State House.
Summary of action. Do you have any reports as to function you've gone to, Cheryl?
Yes, well, I am the Chair of the Regional Network to End Homelessness. We are updating the 10-year plan. We have this year renamed it to basically Manage Homelessness or something to that nature.
So we're back to manage.
Well, I think that while I have a name, it's always bothered me to have a name that almost sets you up to fail from the, you know, big area, it'll really do that. And that wasn't just my feeling. However, instead of just doing the same old, same old, we have cut it into different sections, youth and families, teenagers and LGBT groups, veterans and seniors, and there's another subset. Anyway, I am heading the seniors review. We have met twice now. We've had subcommittee meetings. We've had members that service the senior population and we are coming out with three goals with three objectives. We're trying to keep this succinct but meaningful. And it's been very interesting, great discussions around that. The other committees have done very good work. David Willard is on the veterans and we've solicited some input from Veterans Affairs, so that has been very productive. We will be coming out with our, all of the drafts have to be in by July 19th, so if anyone has anything they want to bring up as far as issues that they see facing seniors, I would be more than happy to receive those. And by July 19th, hours will be completed and then we will be putting together this 10-year plan that will have to be due by September. So that will, you know, if there's going to be public meetings and input, I will certainly let the public know about that. I'm sure that there's other things, but I haven't in my head right now.
The, I attended the, let's see, there was an award ceremony last Thursday here at the courthouse where we gave recognition to a lot of kids that had been engaged in the Cape Cod Compact energy process. It was, let's see, there were kids from Eastham, Howard, Howard, no, first prize, by the way.
Keighley Card Academy.
Was that? And there's also, Eastham shows up wellness all the time and they were certainly represented. There was also a monthly meeting of the Suicide Prevention Coalition and they are planning a legislative outreach in order to look at that. And although I didn't mention it, last week, the Lyme Disease Coalition has met and I noticed that there is now a statewide coalition, statewide committee. And Brenda Boylan had recommended a member of that subcommittee to be part of that. And that's, you know, that's ongoing. See what else? The, the Cape and Island, the Sluckins Association met last Friday and they had the representatives of legislative delegation there, Senator Wolf and Sarah Peak and Clarence Turner all spoke about some of the budgetary issues that we're facing, which are, you know, which are certainly real and ongoing. On, let's see, the, we had on Tuesday, let's see, the Human Service Committee of Barnstable has met and is moving towards selecting substance abuse as being the key thing for the town of Barnstable to address going forward. That particular committee that I represent the commissioners on at the town of Barnstable is concerned about the increase of substance abuse within the town of Barnstable among all of the, all of the sectors of the population, teenagers, you know, in schools, veterans and elderly, especially elderly. And the great concern is on the increased use of prescription drugs as an entry to addictive behavior on the part of all of that population. They see a great need of trying to educate parents so the parent could be aware of some symptomatic behaviors going forward in order to try to prevent it. And it was the Arts Foundation had a, had a reception at the Regional Transportation Authority yesterday where they were introducing a passport system. The passport, of course, is a booklet you can buy to get discounted entry into many of the venues here in Cape Cod. So that's what I was involved with over the last week. And do you have a report for us?
I do, actually, yes. And on my report, I actually have three requests to use various county facilities and I'll ask you to vote to approve them after I complete letting you know what they are. I have a request of the Barnstable Village Business Association to use the county complex parking area on Tuesday, August 9th, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM for music and craft social. I have a request of the National Multiple Sclerosis Society to use the Orleans Courthouse parking area on Saturdays at 10:00 to 10:00 from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM for the MS Challenge Walk. And also, I have a request of the Pan-Mass Challenge Organization to use the Barnstable County Complex parking area on Sunday, August 7th, from 5:00 AM to 10:00 AM for, they're going to use it as a Pan-Mass Challenge water station.
Okay, objection, do you have a, would you make a motion?
I, we make a motion that we approve that.
Okay, I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I wanted you to know, and now Pat is gone, but I wanted to thank the Mass Interlocal Insurance Association. You know, we've had their, we've been a member of them for our insurance for a number of years and we received a additional participation credit for fiscal 2011 of $17,404. So that's pretty good. So I'm going to apply that credit to our FY 2012 insurance premium, so we thank, as you know, Pat's on the board.
She is.
And I'm on the board, so thank her very much. I wanted you to know on the NACO Pilot Program Dental Discount Program.
Oh, yes.
That I received an update on the program and in Barnstable County, we have 47 participants who have signed up so far. And that's good news. There are a total of 29 counties nationwide participating in this program and nationwide, total of 907 participants have signed up. So our participation rate is a little bit higher than nationwide average.
And I believe that Beth Albert is promoting this.
She is, there's been some issues. We're still looking into some of those issues about dentists either not knowing that they were part of this program, so yet we're still working out the bugs, but at least there's some encouraging early signs about this, so.
The intention of this is to provide an opportunity for people to get some relief with regard to.
Discounted dental services.
To get discounted dental service. It's not an insurance policy, but it is, it is a way of reducing the cost of dental services here in the Cape.
Yeah, that's right. So I also wanted you to know that the Barnstable County Finance Department is in the process of reviewing its fraud risk assessment program with all of our county's department managers. The program was developed so as to be compliant with one of the auditing standards that we're subject to and to help improve our internal control procedures within the county. So we've sent that fraud risk assessment to all the department managers and we're in the process of reviewing it with them. And finally, two things. I've provided you with the invitation which has the detail on it. I don't want to say them too publicly, but Leo has invited you to his annual family potluck and that's Saturday, June 25th.
I'm receiving.
So you should have gotten that. And also, just a reminder, tonight you are both signed up for the Chamber Annual Dinner at the Coonamessa.
Did you mention that the Cape Cod Commission got an award? I read that in the paper.
I saw that about the energy.
Yes, they got an award for clean energy excellence and clean energy.
No, I was done before, I saw it yesterday, actually, clean energy excellence.
In Washington.
For their regional policy plan.
Their regional policy plan. And this is the second, I attended the one in New Orleans for their, their work on energy and their standards there. So this is, they've done great work. Only 10 other agencies or 12 other agencies in the country received an award, so that was, and theirs is really very cutting edge. They're really ahead of the curve, so they've done a great job.
Yes, it's wonderful.
It's Ryan Kristenberry that heads that whole area there and congratulations.
And indeed, the, you know, the regional policy plan is very forward-looking in that it is looking for alternate and renewable energy to be part of the development on the sides. Do we have anything else?
I don't have anything.
Okay, I have an item called new business. Are there any new business items that are being introduced? Do you have any?
At this present time.
Okay, neither do I. So with that, I would ask for a motion to.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, there is something I would like to request. I would like to put on the agenda for next week, a discussion about NSAR and the study that we have proposed to do. We have knocked on every door and I think it's time that we're knocking on our doors. So I'd like to have Patty.
Is this the vegetation?
This is about the vegetation management. So I'd like to have Patty Daly here with me next week to discuss the proposed ordinance.
Sure. So that's 6:22.
Okay, now, we do have, the efforts that we've made so far is we put the four-point plan on the Cape Cod Commission website so that people could get a flavor of what we proposed. I have been in touch with Laura Kelly.
Yes.
From Littlefield, you know, just to let her know that we wanted to provide as much visibility for this ongoing project as possible. And perhaps that might be useful for her to be aware that we're going to have this.
It doesn't, what I'm asking for is I'm going to be making a request for some money because we have been trying to get money for these studies that are going to be very crucial to going forward in this, in these studies. So knowing that there is some, somewhere around, I thought that I would come forward.
You have some money?
Yeah, I think that I recall our county administrator referring to some funds that may be able to be tapped. So I am going to be coming, I am going to be coming forward with the Cape Cod Commission with this proposal.
You want to tell me offline?
I'm not sure of the numbers. Exactly, so, but I will, I will get that to you before the meeting and that will be a discussion next week. And in light of that, also, I did get an invitation that today there is a presentation, I guess some of the Cape delegation has been invited. There is a, in the Mass Audubon area off of the road that, it says harbor lights going up right here off of Route 6, I can't remember the name of the road off the top of my head. There is a farm and farmers that use Mass Audubon to raise their goats. And we have been in discussion with them.
That's June 17th, right?
I thought it was today.
No, it's June 17th.
It was June 17th, okay. So June 17th, there's going to be just sort of a presentation on how goats are healthy on the rites of way. Well, we, myself and Patty Daly and Martha Hevener have been pursuing a pilot program of goats on the rite of way.
Delicious, by the way.
And wealth fleet. And Paul Seelof is all for this, but it's not as easily done as you think. I mean, of course, you have to have a professional. I mean, of course, you have to have a professional herder, very, very few, hard to find here on Cape Cod. You have to have an understanding of what is edible and what isn't, because they could just eat everything and get, you know, the good species as opposed to the indigenous, the invasive species, some of these things. So, there's, there's, again, there's more layers. There are many things you could just tell NSAR to stop, you can't, you can't just let goats go herding up the power, whether it be the power lines or anyplace else. There are different health things you have to take into consideration. So, we're pursuing this, but there's been some kind of, you know, we're getting kind of stonewalled a little bit, and maybe it's just because it's farming time. However, I will be going over there on the 17th. I am sure it's going to be a lovely day just to see the goats, and don't we all love goats?
Thursday's the best day of this week.
So, we are pursuing that. I would love to have the assistance and cooperation and anything, any support that Green Cape or any of these organizations can give us in making that a reality, just to see how this works, and it's something that we can use in parts of the Cape. It's not something that we can just sort of kind of keep, you know, herding them all along the power line. If they're not appropriate in some towns, some towns won't let them in.
Yeah, they get sick, yeah.
So, so, these are, this is a pilot program. I just want to reiterate, we are doing everything we can to make sure that we are reducing, if not eliminating, chemical products, and goats just make you feel good, don't they?
Well, my, my grandfather used to occasionally roast a goat, and I remember being.
Oh, don't talk about that. I was talking about goat.
Down in Mississippi, you know, where, you know, was a part of the.
Afterwards.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think that, I think that we've all said that, and we're the only ones that have skin in this game.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, that manual extraction is the ideal, but it has to be selective manual extraction. And I think, I think that based upon what I've been told, Sue Phelan at Green Cape is the one that's fostering this program.
Well, she, she is, we're, we're trying to, so I don't, in a sense, I get a feeling that, you know, there's two separate efforts here, and I think we would do a much better job if we combined those efforts and actually made this pilot program a reality to see, look, it's great, let's do it as many places as we can, or say, you know, it's working, but it's, these are all the problems we're encountering. So, instead of working in two separate areas, I'm, I'm going to definitely be there and invite them to work with us, as opposed to.
Collaboration is so important.
Collaboration is the name of the game. So, anyway.
One minute, Mr. Redmond.
No, we're done.
And I think that is it for me.
Okay, and I believe that we're now motion to adjourn.
Is it a recess if you're going to the Assembly? Anybody?
Are you going to the Assembly?